So I'd like to call the Lane County Board of Commissioners to order for a work session. Today is Wednesday, October 21st, 2015. And today we are going to be talking about the OSU Extension Service. And I think I'm just going to turn this over to John. Thank you. You requested this work session, or if any staff worked it out, so I'll let you begin the meeting. So, John?
Thank you. John Punches, Oregon State University Extension Service, and I'm joined around the table by a number of folks that are...
If I... Sorry. Let me interrupt one second just to note that Commissioner Farr and Commissioner Lichen are both excused. They're taking care of... Unfortunately, other people schedule meetings that are county business involved, and they're both attending the related calendar this morning, so they're excused this morning. But we've got a quorum here and a majority of the board to listen. So, thank you. Go ahead.
Good. Okay. So I'm joined around the table by a number of other folks that are all interested in finding a path forward to make sure that we have the funding necessary for extension to really deploy operations here in Lane County. And what we'd like to do is we're following up on the recommendation that came in our last meeting, to come back for a work session and to respond to some of the questions that commissioners asked at that time. And so I've prepared a new presentation and then asked folks here to speak to specific issues that came up last time. So that's the format of what we do here. And certainly, we're at your disposal for questions, and we'll be here as long as you need in order to make sure you have the information needed to be able to make a decision on this issue.
John, I think before we start, could you introduce the folks who are...
Sure. Well, there's a lot of yous, so why don't you just go around briefing and introduce yourselves and tell them what the capacity is that you're gonna be making.
Good morning. I'm Lena Reader, and I'm currently the president-elect of the Lane County Master Gardener Association.
My name's Raphen Sprese. I've been a master gardener since 2012, and I'm currently on the board of the Lane County Master Gardener Association.
Ryan Glaser, third-generation farmer. We do hazelnuts in the area.
I'm Emily. I'm a youth 4-H member, and I'm a Lane County ambassador and state ambassador.
Nafan Sperry, Sperry Tree Care, commercial harvest, and strong supporter of extension.
Lindsay Reese, I wear many hats. I work a 642 acre tree farm with my husband for generation timber harvesting. I work part-time forest day and forever as a forest educator. In recent years, we've probably given up 10,000 people for a tree farm for forest education. And I've been working a lot with John over the last few years since he did not have a forest extension position to bring the forestry into 4-H last year. And we posted six classes two years ago, kind of in conjunction with Douglas.
Good morning, John. I'm Gary Johnson, retired forester from the industrial side. Also, high school life forester, had a test until five years, and have a tree farm of about 90 acres out here towards the Monee River community, and then chair of the local Lane Smalleredness Association. And we've been a strong supporter of the extension service for many, many years, and quite sadly, when we lost that position here in Lane County, so I'd like any information we can on behalf of the smaller little counties.
Great. Thank you. So I would, with your permission, I'll walk through the presentation here, fill the response to the questions that came up in our last committee meeting. So, this is a reminder, what extension is asked of US commissioners to consider is your first is the May 2016 ballot for a local options act specifically supporting extension programs and services in Lane County at a very low tax rate, 1.5 cents, $2,000 for assessed value. It would be a reminder in comparison to others, and it's for a five-year period. Really arable thing to make that onto the May 2016 ballot. That's our target for lots of different reasons. High among those is we need money at that point to make things count, to kind of trickle on and forth. So, one of the questions that came up last time, and I believe this was Commissioner Bojicik's question, and I think others chimed in with this as well, was the concept around who is really responsible for funding extensions at a local level? And there are federal laws that apply to how federal funds are applied to the extension service. That's governed by the Smith-Leaver Act, which was put into place in 1913. And it really states, it created the federal extension system, the cooperative extension service nationwide, but then provided the mechanism by which states could have the local extension services. Those are always by law associated with Land Grant University here in Oregon, Oregon State University. And the actual ratio of funding, how that comes together, really does left to the expression of the states to negotiate with USDA. And so, there isn't a set prescription for what county proportion is. The law says that states must at a minimum match what the federal government provides. And so, what we need to do is look at what the Land Grant University for this state says is, exists to push. And here in Oregon, Oregon State University, really, there's no way that it can fund all of the needs to our different local opportunities through that combination of state and federal funds. Not enough of it to grow around. And so, the practice has bound that OSU assigns positions that are funded by state and federal dollars. Few of those places would express need and an opportunity to really make that position successful. And so, OSU has long defined their willingness to put a position in a county predicated that on having sufficient local funds available that that position can be successful. And so that means we need to provide sufficient office space and secretarial support and travel dollars, things of that nature, in order to do this. So, here in Lane County, for the last several years, since we don't have county support directly through the government, we've been piecing together various grants and contracts and fees and things of that nature. And we've kind of maxed out, in fact, we're a little over maxed for what we can actually provide, and still leave some pretty big gaps now. So we're looking for some way to have a broader pool of funds in order to be able to address that.
Before you even know it, I clarify a couple of things. It sounds to me that the Smith-Leaver Act is really about federal and state funding.
It's about federal and state.
And doesn't identify the local funding question. It's the local funding of off-campus positions or support for off-campus positions. That's not statute. It's university policy.
It's university policy, but it's empowered by that statute that says the way that you implement this at the state is left to the discretion of the university, the Land Grant University, in negotiation with USDA. That's what I was gonna say. The way that those, actually, that the federal fund will be matched is negotiated agreed upon by the university and USDA. And that procedure here in Oregon has long been that there's a county component to it that provides for that local level support.
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to, yes, try and, I just wanted to try and understand the difference.
Now, the Smith-Leaver Act, you said, establishes a floor for the state that they must appropriate in state funds an equal amount to federal funds.
Equal or greater?
Equal or greater. So, when I said at the last work session, I thought it was one-third, one-third, one-third. That would be consistent because obviously, with the state and local.
Right.
Two-thirds, that would be greater than the one-third federal.
And that used to be a pretty common ratio. Over the years, the federal funding has declined a bit. Some states have chosen to invest, some have not. In many places, if you look around the United States, extension avenues largely become funded by county. There are many places where extension faculty members, extension agents are actually counting in for it. That's not been the case here in Oregon, but there are places where it is. But there's a lot of variation from state to state. And the thing that we're starting to see happen here in Oregon is that many, many counties are shifting from having extension funded through the general fund to having it funded by voter-approved districts, county service districts, specific to support of extension. In those places, it's very common to see not only the support services provided by the county, but a number of the actual positions supported by it, by the district. So that's an opportunity here. And OSU certainly, in these times when it doesn't have enough revenue to grow around, but has lots of needs, it favors putting positions where it can leverage its funds. So, if we have part of the funds for a position, we're much more likely to be able to bring in the state and federal funds to run that house. So that was my question. Another question that was asked was how this thing that we're asking for would impact compression here for other people's tax districts and so on. And my comment last time was that I was pretty confident it wouldn't. And we have since confirmed that with the assessors' office. And Nicole is very gracious in running various analyses for this. And if you recall, the way compression works, when you have a district, then if there's compression, all the districts are reduced proportionally. Local option taxes sit kind of outside of that, and they are the first to be compressed. And so, by definition, they won't impact districts, or they won't impact county revenues through direct financial. They won't impact cities. They can potentially impact other local option packages, but in our case, it's so low that there really, there's no implication there. Assessor Cowles actually ran the numbers and said that our compression to what we're asking for would be less than $400 for our particular tax base. And it wouldn't have, his numbers showed that it didn't have an impact on the other districts. It's just too small, doesn't make a good radar.
Yeah. And I would add that down in Cottage Grove, we randomly listed the jail bed levy, and there was a levy for the fire distribution. What happened when we did ours, we had some compression with those option levies. But I believe now that the market has turned around and values have gone up, it's reduced the compression mark.
Yes.
We're talking probably on the highest end. So as you said, we're just kind of in the middle of the process.
But it was, Assessor Cowles, really great to work with, and ran the analyses, did them multiple times. And I think we're pretty safe in that, growing that for this particular one. That doesn't mean that if there are other local options in the future, that they won't cause compression, even to compress our rate of deaths. But that's just part of the way that access is. You guys asked me to look into economic development implications of funding for extension. And with your permission, I had a great meeting with Sarah Case. You guys have a man there, she was fantastic. We had a very good conversation, and you can see that there were lots of areas that we identified as opportunities for a better-staffed local extension service to work with your economic development department around issues here. So, issues of food hubs, that's something that is near and dear to the extension heart. You know, investing in that in other areas around the state, trying to find ways to really provide a mechanism for local food to stay local and to use local, but then you know that there are some infrastructure needs here in Lane County, particularly around distribution, around cold storage, and to that nature. So those are things that we've all identified around. Development of infrastructure would be a place that extension could provide some expertise and some leadership, have somebody actually stationed here. Mixed product developments are working with small farms. We have Melissa Perry who works with small farms in Lane County as well as in other counties. She actually lives in Cottage Grove, but chooses to work from Benton County because they can support her efforts. And so, we get a little bit of that, but we don't have the funds to really allow for the work here fully. And so, we'd like to be able to actually fund those efforts, and it would take much to make that happen. We have, because of our climate here, lots of opportunities for shoulder-season crops and even winter crops, and with a little bit of investment in order to research and help people, help ag producers figure out how best to approach that, and support on the infrastructure system. But I think we could see more of that, crop cycle here that would be supported with the farmers' markets and go through the kind of... To see pieces start to fit together. So Sarah and I had a great conversation, and really saw lots of opportunities for interaction and collaboration in the future. Another issue that one of you mentioned, I think that you commissioners, Lawrence, have commented that many of our farmers and forest owners are aging and don't necessarily have a clear path for transitioning to that, to next generation. And that's a very, where OSU does work in every generation transfer, we have programs working for us in agriculture and agriculture, and we're not able to bring those programs here this time. Sarah and I talked about whether it would be feasible to fund extensions' needs through economic development funds as opposed to what we're asking for. You really think that it's, the economic development funds that you have at your disposal aren't well-suited to funding the types of things that we're asking for? There might be opportunities in the future, if we had an ag person here, working specifically in commercial ag, it's very possible we can find collaborative opportunities, grants in places that we can interface and leverage those funds. But we didn't see it as a place that was a logical mechanism to directly fund extension in the way that we need. And part of it is that we're looking at more than just ag, modern distribution, to figure if you have an extension that doesn't...
And as you mentioned, that there's, you know, some infrastructure needs in our county to help make it more practical for us to get more people through distribution. So, in the past, the county has, with that economic development funds, been able to participate in that type of activities, whether it's cold storage, or whether it's equipment to manufacture products. Those, I think, match well and what we've supported in the past. So, if you came in here and was able to figure out around needs, then we can...
I think that's where I see some real collaborative opportunities, Sarah and I. So there's, there's lots of opportunities, there's...
John?
Yes?
Let me just interrupt and ask you a question on two areas of economic development overlap with extension. And one would be at the kind of big level, it was a few years ago that the Board of Commissioners met in Coburg, Oregon, with the Coburg City Council. And there was a room full of applesauce, I'm sure I'm massacring the product line here, but I'll just say...
Producers.
Apple sauce producers. It was a French-owned company, and they brought their engineering staff in from Michigan, and their financial people from New York. And their plan was to establish a large applesauce and apple product producing facility there. And they wanted to know about the wastewater, they wanted to know about the fresh water they needed, they wanted to know about the apples. And they had done a huge amount of research before this meeting ever occurred. And it was sort of at this big level of a big economic development potential project. And it occurred to me at the time, well, you know, and I know there are some lingonberry experts in the room that might think that that fruit would be better than, say, apples, but these French people with their bureaus were kind of, they had a plan for this big plan. Now, we didn't get the big plan, we didn't get it. But it occurred to me at the time that involvement of extension and OSU, you know, might have sweetened this apple development a little more, I don't know. But I just remember thinking at the time, hey, we're talking about commercial agriculture, talking about the need to produce these apples in a way, I think it was an organic proposal, in a way that's going to be acceptable to them. And that's kind of at the mega level, and we didn't really get that. And I'm also interested in something else, which is, in the economic development arena, what about at the more personal level, growing our food, more food, and preserving the food? And I know that you've got a huge, you know, group of people in there. What about using economic development dollars to, to say, hey, for every dollar, we save the people of Lane County by them growing their own food? You know, that's, that's a dollar in their pocket that we could measure the financial implications of that. And our economic development staff, you know, could help both try to compute what that would be, but also to use the lottery dollars, the economic development dollars that counties are giving to purchase. And that way, we could jumpstart programs like Master Gardener and Master Food Preserver and other ways, and maybe even the 4-H, or excuse me, the F-NAP and other expanded food and nutrition programs to get people to do more of this themselves and be further educated.
So, from my discussion with Sarah Case and from my experience with economic development, I think that there certainly are opportunities to mesh what you're doing at the county level with places where OSU has expertise. So for instance, around food product development, food innovation lab, we're already, by the way, combatting it here. Our Master Food Preservers kind of are the starting point with individuals and home use, but then that scales up, and at some point, as people start asking more and more complex questions and wanting to take products to market, and we put them in touch with the food innovation lab. And so, we have, I think, more opportunity to bring that spectrum of services here at Lane County. We have a great program called Recipe to Market, which we've implemented in a number of other counties around the state. And it really looks at those people who want to take a product that are currently producing for their home use and scale it up into a commercial product. So it's not only at the food safety, food preservation, handling, storage, savings of that, but also the marketing, the business planning development activities. And so those are generally done collaboratively with economic development units, small business development units, across that spectrum of services that OSU provides. So that's just one example of ways to collaborate more in that capacity. I think from Sarah's perspective, the economic development dollars that you have would be more likely to be directed to the individual doing, you know, startup companies, with OSU providing various intellectual services, if you want to call it that, the research background, the testing services. So I think there's an opportunity there to leverage each other's efforts. There is. We probably also could contribute more to workforce development. And a great conversation was with folks down in Cottage Grove here last week, about opportunities to think about 4-H from a more local workforce development perspective, and to reintroduce activities with schools that no longer have location-led tree programs and things of that nature. There's lots of ideas to...
And I would add that that's a good connection with our workforce partnership with Christina Payne, because there are workforce dollars specifically geared toward you, and it might be a great partnership. So I would encourage you or ask that to talk to Christina and Sarah, there's some opportunities there.
Yeah, and I would be happy to do that. So, you also asked about industry support, and I've got two fellows here that are very busy businessmen, and so I want them to just kind of pitch in and ask them just to talk to me a little bit about how extension locally supports ag business and agriculture. Those are just two examples. And I call on them first just because they have busy schedules and they need to move to get out of there. So, Ryan, you want to just start off here and ask a little bit about how extension has worked with you and what that's meant by that?
We've worked with extension on several projects through grass seed and hazelnuts for ever, for 30, 40 years. I started working with Ross in '99 on our hazelnuts, on his pruning techniques. It was a bit, our orchard was planted in '80, '81, 130 acres, and it was really dark on the inside, and Ross came up and he said we need to prune it, you know, more like an apple, or open it up, because it only fruits on the outer, basically the mushroom shape of it. And so, he advised us to take out roughly 20% of the tree, or one major cut, and we were essentially logging at that time, which was a little nerve-wracking. We gave him, we gave him 20 rows. And we saw no yield production in that first year. And since '99, our, our mercenary product has increased by 43%. From zero to, zero to 1999, we were at X, and now we're at plus 43%. Just because of the larger fruiting surface to let the light in, we're actually fruiting down right out the notch of the tree. And subsequently, we go in on a yearly basis and do some cleanup. We're doing small cuts now. But yeah, we'll go through and clean up. You know, on the, you know, that, that's a long stretch of data for that 43%. My last four-year average, I'm actually up this year 11%, even with the heat and the drought, when the industry is somewhere down around 20% off. So, with the, with pruning techniques, and it seems to, seems to be working, you can't argue with the numbers. And then, on, on another note, we did work with Ross. We were running conventional hand lines on our orchard, and we, with a little help from Ross, we converted that in '14 to drip in that existing orchard. And all my new orchards are, are all drip. And we've decreased our water by 22% across the board for the seasonal use. And then, in '11, we started planting new, some new orchards with the new varieties and cultivars, and we have 200 acres of new hazelnuts. And we're starting to decrease our major cuts. We're starting with Ross's, or the extension service's recommendations on pruning right off the bat, and getting those tree shaped. And we will be picking our, our first 2011 planting here shortly, tail end of this week when it dries off a little bit. So, yeah, across-the-board, extension has been a big part. We've done lots of projects with them, trials, and it's, it's a really good, really good program. And then with the increase in hazelnut acres going in, since '08, there's roughly 15,000 acres have gone in. So on an economic basis, that's a high-value industry that's coming to market.
Thank you, Ryan.
Questions?
The question, do you sell your product here locally, or how do you do that?
Mine, mine is, mine, my distributor that I work with is actually in Dayton.
I just asked that because my son loves hazelnuts. I think part of one is Drakenham, but I can't amass, but they're really hard to find.
Yeah. Most, most of the cleaners, most of the, now, there's some down here, yes, but the majority of them are up north, to my knowledge.
Lone pine.
Yeah, Lone pine. Yeah, there's, most of the major, the big boys are up north. Across the board.
We're asking the van to speak from his perspective.
Well, as an interesting little transition, I live in agricultural soil, land, and Brunner Dryer was an active organization on River Road here in Eugene for years and years. And I happened to go to the garage sale where they were selling off their materials that, it was a fascinating little production facility in a barn that I had just assumed was a barn. And did anybody else go into Brunner Dryer? Did anybody have the, okay, privilege? Little train track, a little compass wide, that did a semicircle through the, or complete circle through the facility with these little train cars that went into the dryer operation, and they stacked all the nuts on top with each other in these little wooden trays and blah, 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 blah. And it just struck me, wow, this has been in my neighborhood for unteamed years. I just thought it was a barn. And it, you know, in hindsight, I say, I'm saying, you should've, could've, didn't get the funding to preserve that facility as a demonstration of small-scale local agricultural production. And it was just, uh-oh. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm coming in here as an individual background in agriculture, as in I farmed for a couple of years, and farmed outside of town here, at Wintergreen Farm, which is an awesome local agricultural facility. And my background is organic agriculture, and there's, there's so many people that are speaking to solutions in the agricultural world through ties to a particular product. And one of the things that extension has is, not necessarily ties to a particular product, but the main product is education. And from education comes everything that we've been talking about this morning. And one of my deep-held beliefs is that education that begins at ground level ripples and ripples, and there's a, and there's a greater benefit that comes from that. So, part of what we've done as a company, Sperry Tree Care, started 25 years ago myself in a pickup truck. We have 15 employees now. We have made a concerted effort from day one to upgrade our educational capacity in the hopes that we push the envelope in the... the hopes that we push the envelope in the educational capacity of the rest of the industry and the town. Extension has been just, you know, an incredible goldmine of support in that regard from the grassroots through to the, you know, the qualities that Ross and OSU have provided. The focus on economic development, we are a success story as a company. There are plenty of other areas where the education provided can be a magnet for other industries to come in to this county. Direct benefits are obvious. The, there's a huge amount of evidence that says dollars invested locally are recycled. No brainer. Dollars invested in education invested locally. No brainer. So to my way of thinking, less than a cent or a cent and a half per thousand is, you know, is not even quite enough, you know? But I'll just leave it at that. Everybody says, oh, there's this wonderful thing called the internet. You can get all this information. Yes, you can get information and information can be overwhelming and inaccurate and based upon something that came from somewhere else, maybe outdated, is not the most logical, up-to-date information. So don't believe everything you read on the internet. And the other thing that I can also, so having the ability to walk out in the field, to look at the plant material that I'm trying to unravel what's going on and have Ross, have somebody from OSU come down and say, yeah, I think you're, you're on the right track, but here's something that you're missing is critical. Site locality, I mean, I can look at a dogwood tree next to a fence where the air is puddling up and see a disease that is not going to be mentioned on the internet. So having that locality, that specific site, specific locality is vital to my success as a provider of a quality service to the local community. We are stepping into a rather unknown ecological climate change world, whatever you want to call it. The more diversity of skills that we have within our local community to respond to the challenges, we had many, many days of over a hundred-degree heat. What's going on here? We, the more flexibility we have and the more diversity of skill levels that we have as a community, the greater the chance that we're going to be able to pull through economically to, to deal with that. So education is, is so darn important that I just can't, I just can't say enough. And I think I'll shut my little soapbox and sit down for a second.
You can see that there's, there's obviously ways that extension works in our community in order to support these industry aspects. There's lots more that we can provide. What I want to do now is just, is just walk through some of the other questions that I think that you, you had around industry support. And I think that the other way that you were asking to look at this is other ways that industry can directly support extension as opposed to doing a tax. And so the answer is yes, there are ways that that could be done. So one way is through grants. You know, we do grants and contracts and we have a large grant that provides a huge piece of funding to our office here to do a nutrition program that's been very successful. And we have, we rebuilt our 4H program that's running now based on the combination of grants and private donations, and so we certainly can do that. Grants, as you're probably well aware, focus you on specific outcomes for whoever's giving a grant or a grant. And so they can be, they can be great, but they don't necessarily allow us to meet our recurring needs and address the highest, the most articulated needs here, highest priority needs in the community. So they can be a piece of it, but I know from my practice and trying to run extension offices that I can't build the basic extension programs around grants. There's too much up and down and we can't build the level of repeatability, the connection with the community, the people that we rely on just on grants. So I look at those as things to supplement, not things to form the base. Donations, we, we recruit those. They, they aren't a huge proportion of our overall annual funding cycle right now. I also know that I run extension offices in four counties over the year, around six or seven different counties. We always go after donations, but it actually takes a lot of time to recruit donations and a lot of fluctuation from year to year and what you get. So again, it's hard to build base programming models on those donations. And some people give altruistically, others give because they're feeling like they should pay for those services, but then become a little disgruntled when they see others getting services who aren't paying. And so it's, it's not the piece that's likely to solve our entire funding issue here. We can and do charge fees for services. We do that pretty effectively with classes. So we can bring in experts and charge fees to do an IPM class series and that works pretty well. We charge for some of our voluntary training series, things of that nature. That brings in monies that we use to offset local costs. The harder things to figure out how to fund for fees and services are site visits and phone calls and internet requests. So you just heard two gentlemen talk about the importance of having extension work with them around site-specific issues. We could impose site fees for visitations, but the challenge there is that it gets them progressively more expensive the further you get away from Eugene. So there's almost a disincentive for people to be well-informed if they live in France. And so we've got to have a way to figure that out. Yet at the same time, if we just say we're going to charge an average fee, that means somebody right here in Eugene pays a high rate so that they can offset somebody on the coast. And so that's, it's a little bit harder to fund that way. And the whole issue with funding phone and email, yeah, you almost have to have a subscription service. And I would kind of hate to see extension programs become a nine-to-one service. There's a lot of people that need those services and pay part of that through their state and federal taxes. And somehow we've got to cover that open piece there. And so it's, it's a challenge for me to figure out how to be able to do that. We, we don't have a successful model for that in the state and everywhere. We could potentially seek revenues through kind of a commodity marketing or commodity research, for example. You may, you might hear with like the beef marketing council. And so the advertisements you see on TV that talk about beef as well for dinner and stuff like that, you see those for different, the cotton commercials, those are all through these kind of commodity marketing councils where industry groups over the years have agreed to pay a certain amount of dollars per unit of product. And it goes into a federally-held pool that's redistributed out to the groups that actually do those services, provide those services. That's not something that's been used, to my knowledge, to fund with extension. It'd be a federal model. It'd be a little bit cumbersome to get in place. There are more local examples for research activities. Some of the research station activities around where they're funded by, for instance, the potato growers. They, they pay a certain amount into a pool that's going to distribute out to any of the research stations that actually do research on potatoes. That might be a model for some ways that we could do this. It's not something that we could put together in a timeline that we have. And I would suggest that what we're asking for, and we haven't warned on tax, kind of does the same thing or something similar to it with an existing mechanism. You don't have to create a mechanism to do this. It's a fee that's provided based on land value, at least on assessed value. And presumably, we can see at least some correlation here with higher value properties paying towards that. And so it allows us to have income streams that are reasonably equitably distributed to the various industrial applications or the commercial applications, but also to capture revenues from folks who are in urban areas that also receive extension services. So this is the model that has been used around the state for almost all extension services where we have a specific funding mechanism for extension. It's, it's done through head-on tax, typically association in the service district. So we're asking for a local option tax as a variation. You guys asked, I think this was face question, should this be something we approach on a permanent basis rather than a temporary basis? A local option is a temporary. There could be an argument made that if we're going to go to the effort of doing this, why not do it on a permanent basis? So the option for a permanent tax base would be through something called a county service district or county facilities district. US commissioners have the authority in state statutes to create a county service district and there's a pretty big list of things you can create them for, and one of them is extension of educational services. So we have the capacity to do that. Then you have within that the capacity to refer to the voters to issue whether they want to fund it through head-on tax. And we've done that in lots of areas throughout the state. These county service districts have a couple of quirks in them that make me think that now isn't the right time to try that in Lane County. The one is that it can cause compression to other districts. And so if we did this in those cities that have compression right now, we would get a little bit of funding, but it would mean somebody else would reduce some funding. And so reduce funding available to cities, reduce funding available to the county from those areas, reduce funding to fire departments, other things that are valuable to people. The other thing is it requires city approval. So you can't create a county district and include the city of Eugene without the city council of Eugene saying, yes, we agree to that voting program. So there's a big lead time in that. And again, with Springfield and I believe Lenita having some compression still, I think it's unlikely that they would agree to it at this point in time. If we are in fact growing out of compression, I think with given some time, we may get to a point where cities would be more amenable to that, and that would be the time of the best for listing a permanent basis. So that leaves us with the option of the second, you know, the local option tax, which is what we recommended or requested, that would allow us to achieve sufficient tax revenues on a relatively equitable basis, but we wouldn't impose compression on those existing districts. You can do this on a county-wide basis without having to worry about whether cities buy in it. What I don't want to have happen is to put something in place that excludes cities. Now, that gets very hard to manage. I actually had a situation at this point where two cities chose not to be part of the district, and so we have to parse the types of services there. It becomes pretty difficult to manage. Christian Sorenson, you asked me to look into ballot trends and just see how things have played out over time with different types of measures. So this is for Lane County and since twenty-ten, when the last vote was made on the extension district. This is just a graph that shows how extensively people vote in favor of something. So that's the upper axis. And then across the bottom is the tax rate. So is there a trend that as you get more expensive, the tax rate does, does propensity to vote for and go down? And you can see those are kind of just all over the place. So when I tried to do a regression analysis in that, it essentially said, no. So that was that. But we can break these out and look at different types of votes. So here's bonds versus local options. And you can see in there that bonds, there's, bonds are pretty much flat across there. If you put a line through those, it'd be pretty much flat. And in fact, it almost looks like they go up slightly as you get the higher rate in there. Now, these are only for the bonds that I could, that are either expressed as a rate as opposed to a big value or ones that I could easily convert. Sometimes you can't really do that. But for the ones that you can convert to a rate, there's not a real strong association there. There's a little bit kind of starting to appear in the local options, but where you really start to see it is when we break these out and look at them by what they're funding. And so you can see, I don't have a laser pointer, do I? So if you look off to kind of the right-hand side, there's some dark blue ones. And those are all school issues, a combination of bonds and local options. And my observation in looking back at many years of school issues is that things come forward and they may not initially pass, but if they're brought forward enough times, they pass. And once they pass, if they're brought forward in a recurring manner, they tend to keep getting passed. Once people make that leap and start investing in a school, they kind of stay there. And so that's what you see there is a number of dark blue dots that correspond to school issues, most of which pass. And the couple that didn't pass, I believe, if I could back and look at the data, you can see that they passed later. And so schools tend to pass ultimately. There's a couple of yellow dots that confirm the law enforcement, bonds or issues passed here in Lane County, which is kind of incredible in itself because as I look at these for other counties, most counties don't pass things to support law enforcement, particularly in Southern Oregon where I have other offices in the state. They just don't pass that, okay? But Lane County's been willing to do that. There's a couple of green dots that were recreation districts. They passed. There's a couple of light blue ones in there that were various city measures. One of those passed, one just barely didn't pass. There was a rather substantial tax rate approved for a library district that passed. And there's that one little orange outlier that was extension, which didn't pass, and it's the lowest tax rate of all of them. And so this isn't a tax rate issue. This is a how well was the message articulated? Was there public support for this? So I would argue that, and I think lots of us would, that twenty-ten vote on extension wasn't outlier. And to kind of prove that, let me just talk about what's happened in other counties that have had votes about supporting extension. So as of the last set of elections, we have twenty-four counties that have passed service districts specifically that support extension. So there's a county service district that was created with the sole purpose of funding extension and/or extension and/or ag research activities. So some counties have a combined unit for that. So twenty-four of those, the tax rates in those, the lowest tax rate currently of any district is in Deshues County at about two and a quarter cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. The highest is over in Wheeler County at almost fifty-six cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. Pretty big range. The, the range in Western Oregon is much lower. It's about four and a half to a little over ten. And most of the Western Oregon counties are actually between five and seven cents. Almost all of the Western Oregon districts are five to seven cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. Commissioner Sorenson asked whether there was a difference in whether they passed better if there was a petition that led up to them. And so I, I parsed that for the data that I have. I didn't have that information for all of the twenty-four. I have the twenty-three of them. So fourteen were by petition, nine were by referral or an order of the commissioners. And you can see if you look at the passing vote range in there, that in actuality, the ones referred by commissioners actually have a slightly higher average vote and a slightly higher spectrum on the range there. And what's interesting is that while, when the first ones started to be formed in nineteen-seventy-five, when that law was made available to us, a lot of those initial ones were, almost all those initial ones by petition. I suspect if I went back and looked at the law, it used to say you had to do it that way. Eight of the eleven most recent ones have been started by referral. So the more common trend now is to have commissioners refer that to the ballot. The other question that Commissioner Sorenson had was do other things that are on the ballot at the same time influence the ability of an extension measure to pass? And the answer is no, they've all passed. There's no data points on the, on the negative side. The only things that haven't passed, there was a nineteen-ninety-five Josephine County district that was proposed by the commissioner there that would have funded law enforcement and extension, one district for those two county functions. And nobody in Josephine County ever votes for law enforcement, okay? So it failed. Then they, the commissioners put the extension piece alone back on the next ballot and it passed by, I believe, sixty-six percent of positive vote. And so, so that one came back in. So you can see that there was clear voting, support there for the extension piece. So again, we got this Lane thing, which was the twenty-ten vote, which failed. And it's an outlier against all the other measures that we've done statewide for extension. It's an outlier in the fact that it wasn't a district, it was a local option, but I don't think that's the huge issue there. It's, I really think, as I look back on the data around that and talk to people who were here for that, it just, we as extension and our volunteers and people working in the community, we weren't able to make the right message heard by people in our communities. It was more money than had been had in the past. It was not explained well what that was going to be used for, and there were a lot of misconceptions about where extension was going. And I think unfortunately, a big perception that extension was moving away from working with agricultural forestry producers, things of that nature, and just going to do urban programs. And the reality is, we do services for urban programs, but we have to, we serve that entire base. And that's, we're trying to be very clear from the beginning that we're looking at funding for our base programs to move forward and really support that traditional, if you will, an extension program in Lane County. So again, let me just summarize my piece of this and just say, here's again what we're asking to fund. We're asking to fund a commercial ag position for Lane County. So we've got that person right here. And the good news, since we talked And the good news, since we talked last time, is that the College of Ag Sciences has stepped forward and said, if you can get a district, if you can get local funding for half of that position, we'll fund the other half. So we thought we were going to have to fund the money for the whole one, we're now going to have money for half of one and get the whole position. So that's really good news. And then the local support for all of these positions. Forestry, which I mentioned before, OSU is willing to place here. They have state and federal funding for the position itself. We need to provide the local support. We need to provide the local support for the commercial acquisition, for our community horticulture position, for our area small farms and livestock employers, folks who are located in other counties or offices, but they would be willing to do much more here if we had a little bit of funding to put towards them. Forest youth development, I mentioned last time, I'd like to grow that. And then I think we can be much more, better positioned, much better positioned to be able to make that into a program for each of the more kids. We want to make sure that our nutrition and food safety programs are well-supported. There's lots of opportunity to grow those, just not quite critical mass yet. And then we've got all these master programs and volunteer programs that we need just a little bit more funding in order to make sure we're both stable and engineable to grow and do the programs here that we need in this county. So I'm going to stop talking now because other people are on the table that are going to talk to some specific areas, but I want to see if there's any questions you have about this stuff that I've presented.
I'm more interested in hearing about the checklist of things that have to be done so that the measure can be placed on the ballot. So in my view, there's a checklist of things that are important to me, one of which is to make sure that we have a voter's pamphlet. And the issue of voter's pamphlet is that the voters acquire information from lots of sources, but one common source that all voters should have access to is a finite piece of paper that explains the government's decision to put the measure in front of people and allows the proponents and opponents to say why they're in favor of it or why they're not in favor of it. So when the ballots are delivered to people's homes, of the thousands or millions of things that I get from various businesses trying to, and maybe even political candidates, trying to get me to do things, that I know there's something called the voter's pamphlet. So I've been, I won't say I'm one message person here on this topic, but it's really important to me. So I'd like to kind of use that as the, because you can put something, governments can put something on the ballot fairly quickly if they don't use a voter's pamphlet. And so that often will allow both governments to go, honey, you know, 15 cents, 1.5 cents, gee, you know, we heard from one guy that said it should be larger, gee. And this discussion goes on for a long time and then you pass this voter's pamphlet deadline. And that's where I don't always get off the vote, but I often get off the vote, is, hey, the real deadline for me is to make sure that the advocates and opponents can understand what it is their rights are to put something in. And by the way, that does protect the advocates as well as the opponents, not just the opponents. But it substantially requires the government then to set up a committee, an explanatory committee. They have to sit down, they have to meet, they have to decide what's, I don't know, Steve, how many words is it that, we did this in our post-reason one?
Each section there's a...
There's a required section, question presented, you know, effective voting, blah, 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 all this kind of stuff. So I want to get with your always organized extension, you know, effort here, I want to see, when are these deadlines? Because as you can see with our current crew here, we're busy, people are traveling, they're going to all kinds of meetings, and I just want to get this on a calendar so that we don't miss these important deadlines.
So I spoke with your elections officer and she was very kind to forward those dates to me and she said, here's the key pieces of this. We need to have the ballot title, that's what it's called, ballot title, fully approved by, before the end of February. And she said, you really need to do that. Make sure the commissioners include this in January or prior to January. That allows time for it to be a community put together to perform the explanatory. And so we've got those laid out. And so it'd be great if, for the outcome of this, you'd recommend to work with county staff, legal on the ballot title. Happy to do that. And we can move forward and make sure we have those. So we have time. And one of the, part of the reason I'm looking at May 16 is that that is one of the elections where the state provides the votes on the ballot and we can contribute to that.
So I have a question and maybe proceed. I think this is a work session and we don't have a couple of our commissioners. We don't generally intend to make motions to give direction. But you can, I guess, feel us for supportive or not, or not. But I was thinking that maybe in our next meeting, we could do something similar if we did with the Front Ridge Public Safety District where we could actually make a motion and give some direction to staff. We got time, it sounds like, February, but the sooner that they can get moving, knowing that they're going to do this helps us, you know, hopefully put together that campaign to support this. So can you give some little guidance? Would you just run three head-ons today or would you prefer that? More formal discussion next Tuesday?
You know, I'm comfortable with three head-ons. I think what's being asked here is different than what the Front Ridge Public Safety District was asking. I don't want to see you further ahead, but I think you've done a lot of research, you have the arguments all together, you know the dates that have to be met, and you also had a discussion weeks ago, a week ago, at a board meeting. So I feel comfortable if the majority of the board that's here today is comfortable certainly heading out at the same, you know, let's work with it. And we would, you know, listen, John has already talked to the assessor and the elections staff to, you know, identify the dates that are necessary and the timeline. So what we can do is certainly coordinate those in terms of when do we need board action on any of those items. So if you're going to take action, you know, we know what the board's schedule is. We've got Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays, we have breaks, it's downtime. So the last meeting of the year is December 15th. So if you want to get action by the board before the end of the year, December 15th is your last date to do that, certainly working with those times for you. So, you know, we're certainly, the agenda for next week is close to final. We also have a meeting November 3rd and November 10th, and then we're down to Thanksgiving. We're back up at December 1st and Thursday, 15th. So we have about five meetings between November 10th and the end of the year. So it's a long sort of winding answer, hopefully to your question, but I feel comfortable that if the board is supportive of moving forward today, that we certainly will do everything that we can in order to make efforts for the licensing extension move forward.
So I want to say that I'm supporting the board. So you got one here already. And, you know, I would share that I was on the local candidate radio station on Monday and the talk show host talked a little bit about, you know, there's this thing, you know, we got the school district going Monday and got this and that. You know, I'm not so worried about the number of measures that are put in there. I'm more worried about making sure people have the time and the capacity to be able to explain what's being requested. And that you pointed out here, 1 and 1/2 cents. And so really, it's having the time and the capacity to do it. And I want to say that your presentation was excellent. I can't believe that, you must have really been working hard in the last three weeks gathering information. Some of us challenged you with some pretty good questions that you researched very well. So thank you.
The real challenge was all the stuff that I didn't include because I actually researched way more stuff.
I want to jump in the queue here a little bit. I will say, I think I agree with Steve's analysis. This is a little bit different than the Front Ridge County policing district. They're asking for legal and other county expertise assistance in forming a district, which is completely different than, you know, a serial levy. Those, that's a process that's well known, well understood and fairly simple to do. The only difference is you're asking us to put it on the ballot rather than... One of the things I was kind of interested is your chart didn't have another no vote that I'm familiar with because Lane County thought we'd put a serial levy on that actually failed about 10 years ago for a nickel or $100.
Yeah, that probably was back, I went back to 2010.
2010, okay. So yeah, it was 2006, I believe, or 2007, sorry. So yeah, it's just a couple of years inside of, you know, so it's, you know, even small things do fail sometimes. So it's not necessarily the amount. And I think in their case, they put it on in the last second, you could put it on deadline-wise, which, you know, was, at the time I was on their board and I actually voted against putting it on the ballot because I knew they were, they didn't have time to work on that campaign and it was kind of a last-minute jerk. Although, because I was board chair at the time, once we had supported a vote of the board, I actually campaigned in favor of it all the time. But it failed because of exactly all the reasons we've talked about before. I will note that 2010 as a political year was far different than what I think 2016 will be. Have to remember that was basically the year of the anti-tax vote. I don't think there was a tax measure that passed anywhere and across the country. I mean, it was just a huge movement. So I will, you know, so there's a lot, there was a lot of different moving things in national politics that affected local votes in some ways. So that said, you know, you had some other people around the table you wanted to get to unless Commissioner Sorenson has some specific...
Yeah, I have a couple of more specific questions. One is, have you, John, in all your many other things you've done, have you contacted the Secretary of State's office to find out whether we can put in pro and con statements in the state voter's pamphlet?
So my understanding is that we can have, so this is coming from the elections clerk here. She said that in the May of 16, what's anticipated is that there will be opportunities for explanatory statements. But she didn't think there would be pro and con, there would be explanatory statements because it's a county. I think that the pro and con can work towards the state issues, but I think there's been something that has clamped on that. And that's new to me because when I did my last service district attempt, we did Douglas County in Delaware in May, and in that election, which was also a May of a new year election, we were allowed to have local pro and con statements. So I'd be happy to go back and chat with her again. She's clearly very knowledgeable. But she said that there are some new things happening and some changes in timeline and so on that she was waiting for. So I'd be happy to go back.
And you mentioned you had done the research on the, with the Lane County election staff on the deadlines for a Lane County election. And my question is, are those the same deadlines for the submission of materials for a state voter's pamphlet so that the government is complying with the, local government, the county government is complying with the state government's requirements for getting materials to them to put into their voter's pamphlet?
So my understanding from my conversation with the one she sent was that what we're actually doing is we are submitting information that will go into the state voter's pamphlet. So we have to submit based on the state's deadlines. So are the county deadlines are the same as the state deadlines or are they the same?
You know, in terms of how much time is left, in November, we have a three-day federal holiday. December, we have a three-day federal holiday. January, we have a three-day federal holiday. And February, we have a three-day federal holiday. And it's not that just nothing happens because it's a federal holiday. It's also that, it's been my experience, that the officials that work for the government tend to want to take a longer vacation than three days. And so what happens is in a three-day federal holiday, you will often have five days where the government's activities slow down. And I won't say, I won't say stop. I would just say those federal holidays tend to be periods of time when people take additional time. So Christmas is a federal holiday, Christmas Day. New Year's Day is a federal holiday. But many people actually do something in conjunction with Christmas, 24, or even did 26. So what I find is that the amount of time between the beginning of this four months, October, November, December, January, period, there's a lot of time when things are slower than the normal period of time in the other eight months. So I just give that as a caution that you seem like you're really on top of this and I agree totally with Fay that you really prepared for today and you're really getting this organized. But let's don't let the difficulty of getting the commissioners together, let's don't let the uncertainty over whether these deadlines are the same deadlines or if they're slightly different. Let's try to get some of the measures that have been referred, let's try to get the legal language to our legal counsel. Because as of today, I think their response to all this is, hey, of course we can do this. When do you need it done? Oh, by the way, we need it done tomorrow because we had a work session a couple of weeks ago, we had this work session, now on Tuesday, we're doing something else. And that's when that will be asked. So I just remember when I was a young lawyer, there was a sign on the judge's door and it said, "Your failure to plan does not constitute an excuse."
Well, I'm up to the challenge and if you guys would like to have me move forward right away and getting the draft ballot title to your staff, I'll jump on it. I'd be happy to move that double one earlier if that's your desire.
Just for clarity's sake, whether it's a county voter pamphlet or a state voter pamphlet, they're both driven by the same calendar under statute. It's a count back from election day, so how many days prior to the election is when you have statements due. You know, then the clerk has so many days to do this and do that. That's all driven under statute, whether it was a county or a state. It's a state calendar that drives our, even if it's a county voter pamphlet. So do you want to continue on when you break the presentation?
Well, whenever you want to.
I'll just be very brief and thank you everybody for your time and support. Here is some information regarding forestry in Lane County.
And if you want to leave any for the other two commissioners, we'll make sure it's in there.
That'd be great. And I just wanted to call your attention, if you open it up to page eight, there's two pieces of information. When I do forestry education, I always talk about the uniqueness of Oregon's forests. And what I love with this map is this is about extension on the west side. And you can see how big Lane County is, close to the Cascades, many types of forests. C.O.A. County on this side has no extension. So just again, the need for an extension office regarding forestry for me is huge. The other piece of information I've included is from Oak Tree. And I did a talk with Association of Oregon Loggers, from loggers all over Oregon, and use this map for everybody's county. Lane County has a huge amount of, as you know, economic revenue from timber. And if you look at the very top where it says land area, total forest land in Lane County, 90%, and then if you look down at forest land ownership, small private, 313 acres, and then timber harvest by thousands aboard feet, 43, 42,371. So as a small woodland owner and educator, one of my goals is helping people be forest literate. And what I find, whether it's a middle school kid, excuse me, John, their parent, or University of Oregon students that come through our food farm, lots of questions with the drought and some other things going on right now, the need to have an extension forester that can help some of our smaller woodliners understand their harvest, potential disease, how to continue to support our mills, how to continue to support our forest operators. So I know I've been working with John for two years to look at how do we bring in a forestry extension person back to this county. Obviously, this information is for you. And any questions for me? I believe you have to answer.
I just want to add that, you know, if you look at the timber harvest, it's 3-star, four times the amount of timber harvested in small and large private that we're dealing with federal government, 96% of the land, versus 45%.
Nice.
And just, you know, the niche product development that John brought And just, you know, the niche product development that John brought in at the beginning of the presentation, and the intergenerational transitions, to me, those are huge issues for small woodlanders, trying to keep our small woodland plots large enough within families so they don't keep getting divided again and divided again, is huge for forest management. And the niche products that I've been looking at for our tree farm, there's a company out of Portland, there's Douglas fir brandy, where they actually harvest tips, Douglas fir syrups, and then all the secondary forest products. So sometimes when we think of our small woodlands, we think of the timber, that there might be something to do with some of their forest.
You got Robin.
Yeah. It's very high in vitamins, too, when I bring kids up, we actually nibble a little bit. Anyhow, again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, alcohol. Gary, do you want to?
Well, on behalf of the small woodland owners, you know, we're that group of people that are tied to the land in most all ways. And the challenge that I've personally seen in our county is the dynamics of change. Land ownership has been evolving, and it's not what it was five years, 10 years, 20, 50 years ago. And the frustration is, is that changing of sizes of ownership, whether it be through inheritance, or it be through capital investment, and we've seen that substantially in this county. We only need to look in the southwest hills out there and look at the dynamics from the old home steps to the residential development of the tree farms. And so with that, you know, the link of these landowners has to have some source of a communication, education, of which Extension has provided us over the years. And that's whether it's ties to the land and the transitional ownership, whether it's civil cultural treatments, whether it's fire protection, they're all serious issues to our community that we need to have a link between these landowners and providing a service that hopefully bonds with them and keeps them tied into our systems and our communities. And so, you know, our program has been tightly linked to the Extension Service, used it as a training venue, used their foresters and their staff as instructors and training throughout the years. And we were quite frustrated when we lost the Extension, and of course, the closure of the building on the county fairgrounds out there that sort of booted them out and put them into a transition process. So, quite happy to see the statement that the state is stepping forward to bring the extension forester back to the county, and strongly encourage you as commissioners to support that process and try to make this bonding system work. It's a big, big process, it's plus, plus, plus from our return. I'd also like to say something that's interesting. I am the chair for the local level, I'm a so and more conservation district, one of those units that, you know, deals with tax bases. And I go back to the time that Lane community was looking for a tax base, as were we, and we went through the process and went down the spiral pretty hard. And the challenge that we encountered was the dynamics of populations. It's interesting that in a review of the electorate and their support, the rural community was the least likely to support us. The strongest support we received was around the community, around the University of Oregon, which we found sort of, ah. And so it's the ties to the community of Eugene and Spring Hill, and the dynamics of their populations, it's very critical, because they will have the vote. And if they believe our process and our programs, then I feel we have a good opportunity, because I'm not positive on our rural community. It's just the nature of the people out there, they do not like tax increases, and it's a hard one to sell. It's not impossible, but it has its challenges to educate and to work with. So, I strongly encourage the county to support this process and move it forward, and John has done an outstanding job in bringing information to this table and providing you insight on what can be done and what hasn't been done. So, thanks again.
And if I just add, I appreciate the passion for the leadership position, because it is incredibly important. There's so many things changing today, whether it's, we know that practices are changing, we reduce our footprint, there's also, right now, climate's changing, we've got probably a lot of species that are being stressed because of this situation. There's, you know, it's just so more dynamic, and it takes a professional. And, you know, as a small woodland owner myself, with a partner of my dad, 250 acres, I mean, we don't have the expertise or the time to stay connected with the changing practices and what's, you know, what would be best for our property and if there was a professional available, you know, but simply just a matter of doing a site visit, talking about it, putting together plans, and educating us about what's going on. It's incredible value, and it would save us from just typically using the, well, this is what we did back 30 years ago, so just go ahead and do it today type of attitude, but when there could be so many benefits, whether it's, you know, for us monetarily or for the environment, because it's the right thing to do, there's a lot of things that need to be considered today that frankly weren't a year ago.
And you're right on, sir, is that the link to the community of being able to call the Extension forester and say, "I got red trees on my tree farm out here, what's going on?" And, because it is an issue that we're really struggling with today, and trying to keep the dynamics of management of these resources at an efficient, high level that benefits not only the landowner, but the community.
Exactly, thank you.
You can probably, I'll sign you on. Yes. You confused me when you said you and Robin. I guess we'll go one at a time. Again, I'm Lee Reader, and John asked me to explain more to you about the financial relationship between the Lane County Master Gardener Association and Extension. So first of all, the association exists simply to support extension programs. That's our whole, our whole reason for being, and specifically, the Master Gardener Program. We are a small nonprofit that's run entirely by volunteers that really believe in helping other gardens sustainably. This is important stuff to us. And ever since 2010, when county funding was discontinued to the Extension Service, we have been giving over $15,000 per year to Extension to provide proper staff and program support for the Master Gardener Program. That's a, that's a big chunk of change for a small nonprofit. We feel extremely fortunate to have been in a position financially to do this, but we are steadily spending down our reserves in order to go. And we just learned that we need an additional $8,000 to $10,000 in the current fiscal year just to keep the master program and staff services fully functional. So, if we don't provide these funds, then Extension will have to reduce staffing and public services. We are already gearing up for our spring plant sale, which is our biggest fundraiser of the year, but we don't make nearly enough money from that to cover these needs, not anywhere near. We would prefer to use our financial reserves to develop educational resources, such as the demonstration gardens at the Kaufman House where Extension is currently located, and also to subsidize the cost of master gardener training. We believe that our volunteer time and funds are best used for teaching sustainable gardening practices that promote water conservation, pesticide use reduction, and greater food security. And if the Board of Commissioners will refer the local option tax measure to the May 2016 ballot, then it will free up our volunteers to continue spending their time promoting sustainable gardening practices in Lane County. So, we really, really hope that you will keep up to do that. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I mentioned my interest in getting people to grow more food.
Yes.
I'd like to say, this year, I did a little bit more.
I noted in the comments about that.
And I'm curious, what, is there any, are there, is there, is there any arithmetic that I could understand? Is there any arithmetic on the topic of getting people to grow more of their own food on their community and their family's financial wellbeing? That if they do more of it, that, that they are going to eat better, and they're going to eat healthier, and they're going to save money?
The association does not have those figures, but I'm guessing there are other organizations that do have those figures, and it would probably be possible to, to find those figures for them.
Well, if there's any interest on your end and the people involved with the Master Gardener Program to educate the board of commissioners and maybe send us an email, I want you to find out, that would be appreciated. But I'm not specifically asking anybody to go out and do a PhD dissertation on the topic. It'd be nice to know that there is some study somewhere that does state that, and that, and that that could be a selling point in the explanation to the public on why this is important there.
Okay, we must see what we can do. Thank you.
Some line wrote here, wants to, basically to be with you to not make us do a signature campaign. Because of the impact that it would have on the kinds of things that we really want to do, I've been kind of trying to, being a concrete, substantial person, I really appreciate somebody who just comes right out and says, "You should refer it." But, you know, I'm hoping that that's what you do. Like Lee said, we have a, you know, a good organization of volunteers, but folks go into the process of being a master gardener volunteer not to do fundraising, not to do public action stuff, but to educate people about home horticulture. And that's what we do best, that's what we're trained to do, that's what we're trained to do. In this county, I think we have a tremendous reach. We're known throughout the state as the county that has very strong specialist committees that are able to do very specialized instruction with community members on topics from pruning to composting, to sustainable landscaping, to, you know, growing tree fruits in your backyard, to plant diagnostics, and adaptive gardening. All of those committees work very, very hard in the community doing presentations, were very visible at all the home garden shows, for example. If you look at the sequence of speakers at home garden shows in this county, Extension, master gardeners are there, you know, four, five, six sessions for each show. We do lots of presentations throughout the county, in schools, our compost specialists worked at our territorial elementary school in Junction City last week, working with third and fifth graders. So that's a big, and that's why we become master gardeners. Probably our, the part that would suffer if we had to reduce funding is a plant clinic. We have some of the most extensive plant clinic hours in the state. We're open to the community four days a week, six hours a day. That means every week, depending on the season of the year, we require 16 to 48 volunteers just to staff the plant clinic. And in the plant clinic, we're dealing with walk-in clients, phone calls, emails from people all over the county on issues of their finding their own yard, issues of growing their own food, and, you know, wanting to know what the resources we have to provide them with the education they need. I was working a plant clinic last week, and I spent about a half an hour with a woman who lives in one of the new low housing, low-cost housing and community developments in this area, and they have a communal garden. And part of what she was doing was collecting information that she could take back to these residents, many of whom have never had a garden, that might be in a garden, you know, she wanted to know what the resources we had to provide them with, with instruction, with help, with, you know, to get those things going, and was absolutely delighted that we had resources that were free, because she's working with a population of folks who don't have the capacity to pay for a lot of training. In the course of our conversation, I, you know, she talked about how there are a lot of kids in the development, so I was able to hook her up with our 4H person who was able to talk with her about, you know, there's maybe a possibility if they could get interested in adults, to actually do a 4H club right on site. You know, so she walked out of the Extension Office thinking that she hit a goldmine. And I listened to Nathaniel talk about, you know, the problems with the internet. You know, we had, we had a question not too long ago from a guy who had a problem in his yard and had explored the internet and had, you know, talked to everybody he knew, and by the time he called us, he was frustrated. You know, he didn't know what to believe, because the information was all over the map. You know, he had vented to one of his neighbors, his neighbor said, "Call Extension." You know, so we talked with him, we had a team of master gardeners there, talking with him on the phone about his problems, going through the information he had, helping him discard the information that wasn't valid, you know, narrowing down his options, and by the time we got finished with him, he said, "Nah." He said, "Next time I'm calling you first." So, we have, we have an impact in the community. We have research that, that shows, from EWEB, that shows that our sustainable landscape specialists who run two-day workshops four times a year with the community members to teach them how to look at their landscape in a more sustainable manner. EWEB's been a partner in that, and the study that they did not too long ago showed that among the participants in the last 11, 10, 11 workshops, there has been a 26% decrease in the amount of water usage in the summer months. And when we're in a, you know, situation like we're in now, that's significant. So, the impact we have in the community is significant. Our volunteers right now, the Master Gardener Program, are at capacity. I think there would be some who would argue that, you know, we're kind of at the tipping point sometimes of being beyond capacity, and the idea that we might have to go out and divert our attentions from educating, from developing our demonstration gardens, to collecting signatures is something that is discouraging. You know, we don't get invigorated by those kinds of things, we get invigorated by working with the community. So, we really hope that your choice is to just refer us to the ballot and let us move on with the things that we are trained to do best.
Great. And I just add that, you know, ask two folks from Master Gardeners, just because we have lots of volunteer programs, and they're all over the U.S. and they're delivering, and I will just say, you know, publicly, that Extension is still in Lane County, because master gardeners and master food reserves would not give up. That's it. The whole program would have been gone otherwise. And so, kudos to everyone who's really stepped forward and made this good. So, I want to have Emily Banks back. Ready?
Yeah. So, I'm going to talk a little about, about the positive youth development that 4H has had. This is my seventh year in 4H. I started showing pigs in the fourth grade, and when Lane County went away, I continued to show in Benton County. When I found out that Lane County was coming back, the Extension Service was coming back, we decided to come back and show, knowing that it was probably going to be a little rocky, with everything kind of coming back together. The first thing I noticed was that the way meetings were run, so I went from Lane County previously, from having like pig meetings like once or twice every couple of months, to having a community club meeting every month. I'm a part of the Eastland Community Club, this includes Pleasant Hill, Dexter, Lowell, Jasper, Fall Creek, Oak Ridge, and Westford. And in addition to our community club, we have families from Crestwell, Cottage Grove, Eugene, and Junction City who are choosing to attend our community club because they see how successful we are. For instance, last night, we had a community club meeting, and of the 21 youth that were previously enrolled, we had 14 new members join tonight, or last night. So, when I started 4H, I had never envisioned that I'd be speaking to you guys today. I was shy, quiet, and just planning on having fun with my friends, and now that I know that 4H is so much more than that, the opportunities are truly endless. In the last year, I've had the honor of becoming an honorary page at the state capitol. That day was when they were passing the gun control, or they were voting on the gun control bill, which was sponsored by our Senator Frazinski. I've been fortunate enough to be able to speak about 4H throughout the state and get more youth involved. Last month, I attended a conference in Bend, which I became certified to train YAH 4H in schools. So, YAH 4H is a conference, is a classroom-based health and nutrition series. I believe we would greatly increase the number of youth involved in the 4H program if we were a little bit more involved in schools and after-school programs. Whenever I talk about 4H, I see a great interest in youth wanting to join, and that's really exciting to me. And I only have two more years to be part of the youth program, and I am like really dedicated to making Lane County 4H stronger with as many opportunities as possible. I did a little bit of research and found in 2002, a study on positive youth development began, in which more than 7,000 students were surveyed in 42 states. It was repeated annually for eight years. Compared to their peers, the report shows that youth involved in 4H excel in several areas. So, 4Hers are four times more likely to make contributions to their community, they are two times more likely to be critically active, two times more likely to make healthier choices, and two times more likely to participate in science, engineering, and computer technology programs during or outside of school. I also found that 4H girls are two times more likely in the 10th grade and nearly three times more likely in the 12th grade to take part in science programs compared to to girls in other out-of-selecting groups. So in closing, I'd like to request that you please consider our request fairly and refer our funding request to the 1916 ballot. Thank you.
So I guess that concludes your formal presentation. I want to ask one last question. And to kind of just avoid this whole thing, but there's a new path crop in Oregon.
It's actually an old cash right now.
It's now legal, at least under state law, and Extension is partially federally funded.
Yes.
So is Extension going to do any sort of advice to growers of that crop?
We are currently prohibited from helping people with marijuana questions. And that is because it's still federally banned, and so it impacts OSU's ability to receive federal funds. It's not just the formula fund for Extension, it's all the access to federal grant programs which is hundreds of millions of dollars.
I just, you know, for some people, it's probably important to know that.
Yes.
So I just wanted to ask that question. Sorry for digressing into some interesting areas. You know, one of the things that, you know, some people know about me, but not everyone is, I graduated from Land Grant College with the degree in ag engineering, even though I ended up working as a civil engineer, but that was my training. And I never was a 4-Her, kind of grew up in a little bit too urban of suburbs until I got to be a little bit older and moved out into the country and I had a couple horses, but then I was divorced and riding horses in 4-H at that time. But yes, I really appreciate the services Extension has. And as I, you know, in college, I did work for the USDA Soil Conservation Service, which was actually, my position was attached to an Extension office really, in providing farmers, you know, information about grading drainage and soil erosion prevention and all that. So it's a long history, way back involved in that. I don't see any issue with, I'll give my verbal head nod right now to staff working there. I don't think there's a need for petition. I think you did fairly good research, that that doesn't really help the process. I agree, it's really a burden on the volunteers to go around and gather those signatures when it's just simple for the Board to vote, place it on the ballot. Once we have you guys presenting the staff with the language you want to have on the ballot, you know, that's a pretty simple process. We've got lots of time. We actually started the process of placing like the vehicle registration fee and the sheriff's levy on the ballot in December, and actually took those votes in late January, February, and still had time to have voters' pamphlets and anything else. So, you know, you guys are well ahead of schedule, and I appreciate you starting ahead of schedule, so we're not trying to run this in a crunch situation. So I think, you know, everything you're doing is very positive, and I think, you know, the way you brought it to the Board was very positive. And why should this Board not place something on the ballot that we're being asked by a large group of citizens to place on there and let our citizens decide if they want to tax themselves or not? It's kind of like, you know, oh, we don't want the citizens to have a choice about what they want to do with their money and what services they want to support. You know, we're not going to even allow them to make that decision. Kind of sounds pretty silly on the Board's part, so. But I really appreciate everybody coming today and providing various pieces of information. I particularly like the tie between Extension Services and our economic development activities. You know, the Board, for a long time, has been focused on the food sector as one of the focused points where we're trying to do our economic development, and there's such a close tie there. And I kind of wish that Nathaniel would stuck around a little bit. Him and I go way back because we're fellow River Road area residents, and I actually, when I was working as a civil engineer, tree preservation became part of land development work in the early 90s. And Nathaniel was one of the few certified arbers around, and started working for developers and doing assessments of trees and whether they were healthy enough to be preserved and would they survive, you know, in single stands and getting not only developers understanding tree preservation, but even the cities that were starting to break these rules to require tree preservation, understanding that leaving a couple sticks of fur that used to be part of a large stand is not tree preservation.
Nathaniel actually got very kind to come in this morning because he told me he had a big tree that he hadn't through today, couldn't just start and leave and then go back to it.
Yeah, yeah, when you do stuff, and so, yeah, and he actually did, and I'll really get into a lead story, he actually rescued my wife one time. I was out of town in training when I was working EWEB. Our front porch of our house had been torn off so you couldn't get in and out the front door, so there was only one door in and out of our house, which was from the kitchen. And one of our cats decided, or dogs decided to bring her a dead squirrel, even at that So she was trapped in the house by this dead squirrel. And Nathaniel was nice enough to come over and remove the squirrel from my wife. But I really appreciate the work Extension does and all the volunteers that are connected with Extension. And I'm more than happy to provide that little bit of service in actually being the mechanism that gets placed on the ballot and then running the finances through our assessment department and all of it that does pass, so that you guys benefit. You know, that's a very small piece of support that we can give. And I think I heard already your verbal head nods from Fisher Stewart and after leave, I heard that also from Fisher Swanson. So I think you've got your three head nods for coming here looking for, without the petition. So if there's anything else any of the Board members want to add to that this time? Those squirrel stories?
So thank you very much. I think we have all of us.
We thank you.
And Steve, if it's okay, y'all, can we chat for just a minute? Please say how to do the next step there.
Don't run away because there's something to say, but we are journalists.
Great. Thank you, thank you, everyone. Emily, great.
Hey, thanks very much.